I like that. We're in the intro. Standby for countdown. Thirty seconds. Standby. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, September 21st, 2022 Board of County Commission meeting. I'm Stephanie Birmingham, your COVID Public Information Officer. September is National Preparedness Month when families are encouraged to make a kit and a plan to prepare for emergencies that could happen at any time. Julie Stimson is here with us this morning from Emergency Management to talk more about this and the recent test of the Wireless Emergency Test System.
Morning, Julie.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Stimson, Director, Sedgwick County Emergency Management. As Stephanie mentioned, September is National Preparedness Month, and this is the time of year we usually talk about building a kit, have a plan, do drills. But I want to hit on a topic that's often overlooked, and that's financial preparedness and the importance of insurance. What we have seen and kind of listened to is a lot of our homeowners and renters during the April 29 tornado are struggling with insurance, and a lot of folks didn't realize how underinsured they were because they haven't looked at their policies and updated it. So financial preparedness is something, like I said, we don't talk very much about, but I just want to share. And I have a little video to kind of show just some tips on things to think about and talk about when you're preparing financially.
Natural disasters can happen anywhere. You can protect yourself by planning ahead. Consumerfinance.gov has the information you need to make a plan and help safeguard your financial future in the event of a disaster. Whether you're at risk of hurricanes, tornadoes, blizzards, wildfires, or earthquakes, here are three steps you can take right now to protect yourself financially and weather any storm. Step one, download FEMA's Emergency Financial First Aid Kit and fill it out. Gathering all the paperwork and filling out the forms may take some time, but it'll be worth it if disaster strikes. Once you complete the kit, you'll have everything you need in one place. You'll have gathered important documents like your ID and your social security card. You'll have written down the phone numbers and account numbers to your credit card companies, utility companies, insurance companies, and more. If you need to apply for disaster aid or contact your insurance company, you'll want this info on hand. Step two, find a safe space to store the kit and the documents you've gathered. Consumerfinance.gov recommends that you make a copy and store the original and the copy in separate places. If it's digital, password protect it. And if it's printed or on a thumb drive, make sure to store it in a waterproof and fireproof container. Step three, make sure you understand your insurance options and the extent of your coverage in case of a disaster. Renters, homeowners, and auto insurance policies generally don't cover all aspects of a disaster. You may need to look into specialized coverage like earthquake insurance and flood insurance. A weekend of prep now can save you months of frustration and lots of money if your property is damaged in a disaster. For more information on how you can protect your property and finances, and to download an Emergency Financial First Aid Kit before disaster strikes, visit consumerfinance.gov/prepare.
All right. So that hits on some key points, again, that we don't really talk about a whole lot. We talk about building a kit and doing drills and everything, but we don't talk about taking that time to prepare our finances and to review policies and update policies. So as we know, in this April tornado, we did not qualify for any kind of state assistance, and we have a lot of folks struggling financially to recover from this. We're very fortunate. We have a very generous community that's come over and have, we have a lot of donations going through the Long Term Recovery Committee, but it's not enough. There's, these folks are going to be struggling for a while. So again, I just encourage everyone this weekend, take some photos of your property, update your financial records, review insurance policies, and just make sure you understand, because you don't want to deal with this when you're in the middle of a disaster. I also, like I said, I mentioned, everyone in this room, those watching, take the challenge this weekend and take a look at some of those policies. I will share, if you're not a big fan of FEMA or theready.gov, most local insurance companies will have some sort of disaster preparedness tool that you can use to help gather your financial documents. So if you have insurance, take a look and see what they have available to you as a consumer. So, any questions on that?
Commissioner Meitzner.
Hey Julie, thanks for being in front of us. Post Andover tornado. So, the, obviously, we circled the wagons, spent hours with Jonathan, Jonathan, thank you again. The only feedback, could you address, if we have another disaster, what's your, can you help clarify there? So the, basically, it's the post-disaster security perimeter where people were coming in, looting and vandalizing, and I was even with the YMCA, and they said, hell, for two or three days, there were people trying to crash in and take stuff. So if we have another disaster, is there, because we have so many volunteer cities and communities wanting to help, can you just address, maybe, how do we establish security around a disaster zone?
It's a huge collaborative effort. It really gets stemmed from the incident commander's decision on what resources they need and where they need those resources. Our role, of course, is to help coordinate, maybe pick, you know, make some phone calls and get some more help as needed. It's a fine line between security and then also allowing help to come in to help the survivors recover. You know, neighbors want to help neighbors, you know, faith-based organizations want to come in and help, but we also have to keep security, and sometimes it's inconvenient, and so it's a fine line. You know, especially our area that was impacted was a very rural area, so blocking off would have been a challenge as well. I mean, security was definitely considered. It was out there at some points with checkpoints and things of that nature. So we do have some lessons learned in our after-action that is just starting to get finalized now with that after-action report. So it is, like I said, it's just a collaborative effort of supporting the incident command on site.
All right. Well, everything else was, was really good. I know they're having a, Andor's having a celebration, I think this Saturday?
Yes, yes. Andover Celebration Days, yep.
So, so are you going to be there?
Most likely. Well, we had the airshow this weekend, so.
That's true, too.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to have a booth out there at the airshow for disaster preparedness.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask, what is the threshold of damage before FEMA provides financial assistance to a community?
For our county, we're at about, I think it's 2.1 or 2.7 million dollars, and for the state, it's over $4 million. And it's a per capita calculation is the number that it comes through FEMA, based on a certain dollar amount per person.
So do you know what the amount of damage we had in Central County was collectively? I'm hitting you with this cold, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 that's okay, that's okay. It's also, I want to reiterate, it's uninsured losses. So the challenge with this is we had so much insured losses that even though we were in the millions of dollars of damage, we still didn't meet the uninsured threshold. But I know, I think it was, I'd well, we would have met the threshold if we didn't have so many insured folks. I know we had some insured, but for the majority, it was insured.
I was going to say, yeah, looking at the number of homes that were substantially damaged during that tornado, it had to be millions of dollars, I'm sure. In fact, on the Butler County side, we know there's a lot more homes on that side. Did they, did they hit the threshold on their side?
They did not. Again, for the same reason of insured versus uninsured losses.
And again, I don't know the number of homes, but it seems like, I mean, do you know how many homes were substantially damaged in there?
Oh, 100, 180? Yeah, 180, I think, is what the final tally was.
Yeah, in Sedgwick County, we're talking over 200 homes that were substantially damaged and not hitting that threshold. So I think for folks to, to look to FEMA to be the savior in this whole thing is really not the answer. The app sounds like a great idea, but having, having proper insurance is probably the greatest message of today. I think having a review of that is a really smart thing to do.
Absolutely. It is harder and harder to get federal assistance, which, you know, there's pros and cons to that. But definitely, individual homeowners' insurance, renters' insurance was a big topic through this tornado because a lot of folks did not have renters' insurance and lost their contents. So, yeah, I can't emphasize that enough. And we don't talk about it as far as insurance goes, and we just need to stay up on our policies or get enrolled in policies.
And I'm probably one of those people that didn't, I wasn't smart about this because I lived in the same house, I just sold it recently, but lived in the same house for 24 years, and so I started the insurance 24 years ago. I'm not sure I ever went back and looked at it. My house essentially doubled in value during that same time, and my insurance thresholds, I think I had replacement costs, so probably was something I would probably be okay in my situation, but at the end of the day, I think for someone who lives in the same home for 20 years is more likely to have a problem if they don't review that once in a while.
Yep.
Thank you for the report today. Appreciate you being here and reminding us today.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thanks, Julie. I appreciate the reminder to everyone. One other thing to add is that veterans can come up with issues, especially upon their death, whether the next of kin don't have access to things like their DD 214, which we will put on file with our register deeds, with a number of documents so that they know how to identify who to contact for things like burial and so forth. So not only financial, but there's a lot of other things that we need to make sure that we're prepared for. But thank you very much for that.
Yep. And then I'm going to change gears into the Wireless Emergency Alert Test that we had two weeks ago. So we did, refresh, we did participate in an FCC-initiated test of the Wireless Emergency Alert System. We had about a half-mile square radius downtown Wichita. We do not have official results from the FCC and how that test went. It's FCC, so we don't anticipate having it anytime real soon. But we do know, just general conversations with folks, is we did know that some people should have gotten it and didn't, and we know some that weren't in that area received it. So just from talking to everyone who was in that area, we know, again, there's no such thing as 100% effective communication tool. We need to still reiterate having multiple means to receive emergency notifications because that was under ideal conditions, and we do know that things did not necessarily work in the way that we would have expected it to. Exactly the reason why we need to test that feature. So, once we get those results, we'll share what we can share. We're going to be waiting on the guidance from the FCC on that.
Thank you. I don't see any questions on that, but I know that there was a conference recently where a couple of your folks received some awards. I know one's in the audience today. Do you want to brief those?
Yeah. So last week, the Emergency Management Department attended the annual Kansas Emergency Management Association Conference. For two years in a row, Sedgwick County took the new Emergency Management Professional of the Year award, so Jonathan won it this year. Cody also, Cody Sharbat also won Instructor of the Year, which was fantastic. And Mark Stump, who everyone knows now because of the United Way, and we've all worked with him, he's a strong partner, also won Support Professional of the Year for the Emergency Management Conference. So there'll be some formal presentations coming here shortly, probably in the next few weeks, from the KIMA president to present these awards. So yes, very, very proud of my team.
We need to bring them all back, and we'll recognize them at one of our board meetings. But again, congratulations to you and your staff.
Yep, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Looking over the agenda now, it is a brief one, with the board considering the resignation of a member of the District One Citizens Advisory Board. And that's it. So Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Well, thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today and everyone that's joining us online and on KPTS. I just want to let you know why I'm wearing a mask today. My wife tested positive for COVID. She is close contact, so as a result, I will be wearing a mask for a while. And I do have a lady that's expecting right next to me, and I need to make sure I do protect her also, along with the rest of the community. So that's the reason I have a mask on. We do have an off-agenda item today that we will have just before consent, but I also want to recognize one other individual that's in the audience today, and that's one of our attorneys, Patricia Parker. And she is sitting in. If you look on the monitor, it probably says Mike Papoun in front of her. That is absolutely not Mike Papoun. But we want to congratulate her for 30 years of her service. We wanted to do it here at a board meeting so that we can let everyone know how much we appreciate 30 years of service. We do have a going-away party for her on Friday, so those that are able to go over to our building that we were working out of now, we can recognize her at that time. But Patricia, thank you very much for 30 years of service. I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to say at this point in time.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's been a wonderful, wonderful career, and I've been able to work with some very talented and skilled people from every department. I primarily represent the Appraisers Office, but I have provided advice to various other departments through the years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I'm so thrilled that I chose to, for my career, Sedgwick County. I was in private practice for 10 years prior to that, and when this position came open, I said, that's for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Patricia. Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't going to say anything, but since you broached the topic, I just wanted to tell Patricia personally that I really do appreciate you. I didn't know you before I came to the commission, and I've gone, I've gone to really appreciate you. We have some great staff across the organization, but in the Counselors' Office, I think that our Counselors especially have impressed me, but among the Counselors, you're top of that list. You have, you've really impressed me. Over the years, I've gotten to know you. You've been an extreme professional, and you've been kind, respectful, professional in every way, and talented. And I know you have, coming from a family of attorneys, your entire family has been talented in the law. I'd love to go to your family dinner one of these days and see how the conversation goes. But anyway, we're going to miss you greatly. I want to say thank you for giving your, your career to Sedgwick County. We have really enjoyed your dedication to our, to our organization, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. We appreciate your service. I know that you did work very closely with the Appraisers Office. You've got hundreds of cases at BOTA right now that you're working, and so we may have to call you back once in a while to help us bail us out on that.
Okay.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, oh, I'm sorry. That is everything at the beginning of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to call a meeting to order for Wednesday, September 22nd, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We did not have anyone come in online or sign up for in person, so we can go, next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of Drake Robinson from the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board.
Patricia Parker, please.
Thank you. Mr. Drake Robinson has submitted his resignation from the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board, and it is awaiting your approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Drake actually called a, he has taken a new position in Kansas City, and his fiancee's in Kansas City, and so he's vacating the territory. But Drake did a very, very fine job in representing the Citizens Advisory Board. I, he will be missed, but I wish him all the luck in his future. And, and we do have an opening for his replacement that would, I think is being posted right now. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Drake Robinson from the board.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to add an off-agenda item that's going to discuss a grant that we have to have approved and sent in before the end of the month, and this is the last meeting of the month. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And to present, Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Greg Pollak appearing on behalf of Sheriff Easter this morning for the Sheriff's Office. Before you, we are seeking consideration for the continuation of the Internet Crimes Against Children grant that we have had the luxury of having for numerous years. Our recommended action for you this morning is to accept the submission of the grant application and authorize the following. The acceptance of the grant, authorize the chairman or designate to sign all the necessary documents, including the grant application agreement containing subsequently the same information and conditions as the application, and authorizing the establishment of the budget authority upon the conclusion of the grant term, and allowing for the remaining balance of each calendar year to be established in the next fiscal year. The amount of the grant that will not exceed is $392,590 that we have been selected to receive this year.
Thank you, Colonel. I appreciate it. All the Commissioners have received a copy of the grant application. We've all had an opportunity to review it. Those of us that have had an opportunity to serve on the Exploited Missing Child Committee know how important that this grant is. It's something that we do each year. They normally send it to us kind of at the last minute. That's why we added it on an off-agenda item. This is absolutely a critical grant. I move that we take the appropriate action. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Chairman, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items B through H this morning.
Thank you. Commissioners, I move to approve item Bravo through Hotel. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to recess the meeting for the Board of County Commissioners for September 21st, and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for September 21st. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
President. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We did not have anyone sign up on public agenda, so next item, please.
New business. Item A, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on September 15th, 2022.
Good morning, Joe. This is probably the earliest you've ever been.
Yes, I'm trying to think what to do the rest of my morning, so. Thank you, though. Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, purchasing director for the record. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts sitting for Fire District Number One results in just one item that we'd like to present for your recommendation, excuse me, for your approval. It's personal protective equipment accessories, and the recommendation for this item is to accept the bids, and we'll list the vendors at the rates listed. This will be for a contract period of two years with two one-year options to renew. For item number one, Casco Industries, Cade Smith. For item number two, Shinka LLC, doing business as Jerry Ingram Fire and Rescue. For item three, it would be Ed M. Feld Equipment Company, doing business as Feld Fire Equipment. For items four and nine, this would be First Due Emergency Response Solutions LLC, doing business as First Due ERS. Item number eight is Casco Industries, Mark Riddle. And our final item, item 10, Municipal Emergency Services. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have. I do recommend approval.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate it. We all had an opportunity to review the bid board. These items are fairly expensive, but they're critical to our firefighters. I don't see any questions. Move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell, I beg your pardon.
Before we adjourn the Fire District, I have a question on another item. I ask a question like an other. We don't have other on the agenda, but I'd like to have a chance to ask a question. Is this appropriate time?
It's an appropriate time.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the Steering Commission resolution we had talked about a few weeks ago. I presented this to our SCAC meeting we had on September the 10th of this month, and they had two recommended changes. One of them was really a clarification in the, in the language. There was some confusion on one paragraph, and I would like to have a minor amendment made to that paragraph to clean that up. So I'd like to meet with our Counselors' Office today, if I can, to get that adjustment made. And then they also talked about having a SCAC, we had four members appointed by the Commission, to say, as a governing body, Governing Board of the Fire District. They would like to move one of those to a SCAC appointment. Again, understanding that there are, I think, six cities that are Class III cities that are supported by the Fire District, pay Fire District taxes, and since they're all members of the SCAC board, the SCAC would like to have one appointment to that Steering Commission. I think that's reasonable personally, but I'd like to have some discussion on that. So again, I think that's reasonable. I'd like to make an adjustment to the Steering Commission, but one of the questions also came up, whether or not we actually sent out the Steering Commission for a view by city councils. One of the members at the SCAC meeting said they didn't believe they'd received a copy of that, of that resolution for consideration by their city. And so I would like to confirm that we didn't, in fact, send those out to the cities, and we have some type of a deadline, about 30 days or so, to hear back from the cities whether they support the resolution or not. And, and then finally, we talked about, I think Commissioner Meitzner talked about sending this out to some of the aviation companies like Spirit and, and Textron Aviation to find out if they had any thoughts on the resolution. So I'd like to just know where we're at on that. So again, I see Rusty here, so I'd like to see where we're at on the Steering Commission resolution. Thank you.
I'm fairly certain that it did go out, and I'll let Rusty address that in a minute, because I did get feedback from Bentley twice already. And one of their concerns is that a town like Bentley, which does have some of our fire apparatus out there and has a volunteer fire department, because of the size of their city, they would not and has a volunteer fire department, because of the size of their city, they would not normally have an opportunity to be represented on this board the way that it's written right now. So we may need to clear that up to make sure that a very small city like Bentley could possibly have representation on, on the board.
The intent, the intent was, of course, if they're being serviced by the Fire District and provide and pay Fire District taxes, then they ought, then they ought to have some, again, I don't want to make the board, I don't want to make the board too big. Nine members was a reasonable place to start. But again, I understand that, again, SCAC having members of, of every city would have, again, this might solve that problem potentially. Just an idea whether that would solve that, that idea. But if they have a voluntary department, I don't know if they're, if they're paying district taxes or not is really the question.
They actually have some of our apparatus, and they are paying it.
Okay. So we ought to work that out. I'm not sure the answer to that question.
Okay. Well, as you're making modifications to it, I just want everyone to bear in mind there are cities like Bentley out there, and we want to make sure that they are represented. Rusty, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. So yes, following the guidance from the board after the discussion during the budget adoption, I reached out to the ten, the ten cities in Sedgwick County who are served by the Fire District as well as some of the aviation companies. I communicated with them by email. Some of them I talked to on the phone. I've received responses back from a couple of the aviation companies and from, as of yesterday, I think, four of the ten cities. I was going to reach out to those today that I have not heard from. I had given them, I had asked them to respond by the twenty-first. So today is kind of the deadline for that. I'm going to reach out to those today that I don't hear from to make sure that if they have some input. The ones I've heard back from so far have been supportive. There have been a couple of suggestions for some minor language tweaks to make sure that it is inclusive of some of those third-class cities. Bentley is served by the Fire District. And historically, well, there was a point that they had a volunteer fire department, and then it kind of went defunct. And then the Fire District had reserves stationed in Bentley utilizing county fire equipment. And the current iteration is that they're back to their own volunteer department, but we continue to use, to keep apparatus in their facility for their use for our benefit. So their, their property owners all pay property taxes into the Fire District. So they're one of the third-class cities that would be served by this recommendation from SCAC. It's also my understanding that SCAC has invited the Fire Chief to come back and to the next meeting, and I assume that you'll be there to discuss this a little bit further. So I hope by, by the end of today, I have feedback from those ten cities, and then I can provide you what, what those city administrators and those, the city councils were asked to provide comment, but I sent it through the city administrator, city managers, city clerks. So I'll provide you the feedback from those councils and mayors. Once I get all of it gathered, hopefully by the end of today or tomorrow, I'll be able to give you their feedback. But most of it's been positive and supportive.
I think it'd be reasonable at this point, again, to collect up these recommended amendments to this resolution. Work with the Counselor's Office to get, if you will, a revised draft ready. And maybe we can talk about this at the workshop and do, do this again. So I would hopefully have a clean version, go back to SCAC next month. Hopefully, after that, if they give it their, their approval, bring it back for a commission discussion and adoption, hopefully. And maybe in about a month that I have from now, we could actually have a Steering Commission approved. It'd be a good, reasonable timeline goal to have. Would that be okay, Mr. Manager? All right. That's all my questions for now. Thank you again for the chance to speak.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Commissioner Meitzner.
And along those lines, I did have a chance to present these, both the, both the documents to our Citizens Advisory Board. And overall, I think they were okay with the, with a committee based on input that you've kind of addressed as the, as the other cities going along. But the other document, remember the one about kind of separation? My Citizens Advisory Board had a lot of questions about that. Is there, my response was, I think we still have to clarify it through the state and things like that. Is there an update on that?
I'd like to respond. So again, that, I would actually see, I'd like to see the Steering Commission impaneled before we even get into the separation.
Okay, okay.
Again, I think that there's two reasons to do this. Number one, I think there's potential cost savings. I think that's legitimate. That, only time will tell whether there's actually cost savings or not. Secondly, it sets us up for legislation for, for really total separation of having an elected Fire Board, which I think is, again, again, is a great goal. Johnson County, for example, has two fire districts that are elected, for example. Sumner County has an elected Fire Board, and on it goes. So I believe there's plenty of examples across the state where you have elected Fire Boards. And by having that resolution, something that gets us moving in that direction, sets us up for success on having movement to an elected Fire Board. So again, I know it's a kind of a scary thing. We don't want to move too quickly. But I do think it's something that was required, requested by the Fire District primarily for cost savings. But I do think that there's reasons to keep that on the, on the table and continue to work at that. I'm not something, that's something we're going to, we're going to quickly pass. But I think it's something we need to work at, and eventually, hopefully, we'll get there.
Okay. So we haven't taken any, we're going to, that's on pause until we.
It's on pause for now, until the Steering Commission is impaneled, yeah.
Right. They were concerned that we ought to have some serious input from Citizens Advisory Boards and the public if we get to those steps. So thanks for the update, and appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Manager, as we look forward to some of the changes that might happen to Fire District Number One Governing Board, we probably are going to have some legislative issues. We're going to have to talk about probably something on other, possibly an executive session. So I think we need to modify the agenda and add a couple more things to the governing body of Fire District Number One so that we make sure that we touch on those each time.
Sure, we'll do that.
Okay? Thank you. Anything else need to come before the governing body of Fire District Number One? Seeing none? At this time, I'd like to adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One and call back to order the governing, the Board of County Commissioners meeting for twenty-one September, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
We're going to have a workshop or a, a part of our committee, a commission meeting in the near future, and I'll let Tanya address that.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Next Wednesday, for our budget workshop, we'll be going over a discussion of the 2023 legislative platform issues. I sent out an email to our department heads about a week ago to start to collect what they'd like to see on the legislative platform. And then I have meetings set up with each of you this week to go over what you'd like to see for the legislative platform. And so next Wednesday, we'll have that discussion.
Super. I appreciate it. So we look forward to our workshop and what we'll do with the legislative agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Do any Commissioners have anything to report for committee reports today? I don't see anything. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Other. Commissioners, anyone have anything to report during other? Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, there's quite a bit of activity this Saturday. No, wait, next Saturday's October first coming up. Do we have a meeting next week?
We have a meeting on October five.
Right. So we do have the employee picnic.
Yes.
On.
October one.
October one, at the zoo from ten to noon or something?
Well, it's, it's for employees to go, they get, they get a zoo pass for the day, and Commissioners will be serving, and other electeds will be serving hot dogs from eleven to one.
And at the same time, the chili cook-off is going on downtown that, that same day. So there'll be a lot of activity going on, on that Saturday. And this Saturday, as Julie mentioned, the McConnell has the every other or every third-year airshow. Every four years now? Wow, fantastic. So that's at McConnell. It was a great event that the last time. They did the, they did the reenactment of the Pearl Harbor attack. That was quite entertaining and memorable. So have they got any specials this, this time? Just some flyovers? Okay. Anyway, so a lot, a lot of activities going on in the community. So thanks for letting me share a couple of things.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Also, I know all the Commissioners received an invitation. The Kansas Daughters of American Revolution sent us each an invitation. They're, they're going to have an event over at the, at the Wichita Public Library on Saturday afternoon. And I know that we're all invited, so please keep that on your calendar. Commissioner Lopez.
And one more quick thing. Saturday is also the Frozen Face-Off, so it'll be the first time NHL is here. Arizona Coyotes versus St. Louis Blues. So we need to try to fill this, this interest bank this weekend, if we can, so we can get more big games coming to Wichita. So please, if you haven't got your tickets yet, go ahead and get your tickets. I think we're trying to get to eight thousand. I think seven thousand last week were sold, so we still have a little ways to go. My family and I are excited to go, so hopefully I'll see many of you guys there.
Thank you.